Four thirty, um, we went really went into just kind of a recess. We're going to come back out of recess and I guess we'll do a roll call.
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Commissioner Bunting.
Here.
Commissioner Gay.
Here.
Commissioner Owens.
Here.
Commissioner Sten.
Here. George, you want to give us an indication?
Uh, all your hands please. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for the day that you've given to us and the blessings in it. And we just pray, pray Father, that you be with us tonight through deliberations for the folks of Grashit County. For its in Christ's name, we pray amen.
Amen.
Deletions. Ian.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with no end.
Do any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes, we need to add I four under new business, broadband grant letter.
You have four. Anybody else?
Did you mean J four?
Did I mean J four?
Consideration, yeah, J four.
Sorry.
Yeah. J four is what you meant.
Yeah, I got a note on it.
Yeah.
Matt's gonna present that.
Yes, Matt.
Yeah. Any other changes? On the agenda?
Sport.
Move the sport of the agenda, it's not on paper.
I'm.
I'm. Okay. Um, brief public comment. Anybody want to make a comment? Anybody online, Matt? Matt online?
Nope, I don't see anybody connected in for public comment.
Alrighty. Anywhere? Consideration of consent calendar, you want to pull anything out of that?
On the consent calendar?
Okay.
Move the sport to. Move this consent calendar out of favor?
I.
Hi. Hi.
Most motion passes. Uh. I don't know, Chris, you gonna do any adminis- monthly for administration, you kind of, anything like that? We don't have anything?
For the administrators' reports, right?
Uh, commission, commissioner committee reports, George?
I can tell you I have none.
Tim?
I went to the St. John's Health Board.
That's Clinton County.
In, 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 uh, Clinton County and, um, I don't, it's kind of a mutual admiration society. Like each other. I don't know why. And I, I did get a call from a voter from Arcata County. Uh, who's concerned about. His neighbor on Jerome Road is, uh, built a pond. And, uh, there is manure trucks coming twenty-four seven to dump. The manure. And, uh, he's concerned about the trucks, but I called the road commission and, you know, they gotta use the road. But he's concerned about, um. Safety, I guess. Of the pond.
Is that something he would have talked maybe to the township about or?
Okay, Arcata Township does have a meeting tomorrow night, but I'll be at the airport thing.
Yeah.
Um.
That's right.
I suggested me.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, there's two places he can go. Township board meeting or county road commission.
Yeah.
They have a board, they have, they have a meeting first of the month, I can't remember.
Okay.
Must have approved, they must have approved some, some, um, there or something, I'm sure.
Okay, so I, I.
You guys have anything to do with ponds?
There.
Okay, you're right there. Three of them sitting right there.
Pond guys.
Pond guys are right there.
You know, there, there has to be like, i- is there a rule, some rules on the manure ponds?
Uh, that regards to the trucks per se, uh, but in regards to the pond itself, you'd have to have a soil erosion permit depending on the size.
Do you have to have a permit? And you get that from the road commission?
No. You get that from our department, um, it's the community development.
So. We need development.
I need some clarification. Are we talking about a fish pond or are we talking about a manure pond?
Manure.
Either or.
You do, you do both.
Uh, but if you got something.
We're talking about Arcata Township.
Yeah.
Yes, on, uh, Jerome Road and the guy lives, um, uh, between St. Charles and Polk Road.
Um. Step one would be to talk to township supervisor or Mr. Merchant.
Yeah, Doug Merchant. He, he said he already getting, then he.
Not getting anywhere?
No, not getting anywhere. In your community, what, no?
It's community, well, rest department. Switch that back.
What, what's your phone number?
Nine eight nine. Eight seven five. Five two zero one.
And that person, that individual that owns that property would have had to get a permit from the permits office.
Right.
And do, do you, are you aware of any pond that has a permit out there?
Even.
You are not. So probably right now they're in violation, I would think.
Yeah.
But that's for investigation.
Right.
When you build a pond like that, then they just wouldn't suck it up? Is that what the deal is? They put a lighter in it or, I mean, why would you, it don't just go away, does it?
I'm sorry, Sam.
So if they were gonna build a pond, like if I was gonna build a pond to dump that in. Would I put a lighter in it or would, how, would it just go away or would I put it in and then go pump it out later? Is that the idea of having a pond?
Tension pond, yes.
Really would go to pump it out and spread it?
Into this small pond.
I see.
Right.
You hope they would have come and got a permit to do that.
We need a, we need a permit depending on the size.
Um.
Depending on the size because you're disturbing soil.
Yeah.
And when you disturb soil. Over acre.
If you have two small ponds and not have to get a permit?
Not at the same time. So if you were to dig two small ponds and the total soil moved was over an acre, then you would need one. But say this year you dug a small one and then in like two or three years you dug another small one.
I think, you got everything you need there, Tim? Would you get a hold of?
Yeah, well, I'll call this guy and, uh, tell him to call the community development. He, uh, of course doesn't want a permit. He's just concerned about this guy that dug a lagoon and their, the trucks are coming with the manure and dump. That's, that's what he's concerned about. But I'll give him your number and you could talk to him about the guy should have a permit. Does someone come out there or?
Yep, um, either bill with company, this is the priority.
Okay, alright.
Any else too?
No.
Yeah?
Um, yes, I had one meeting in the city of Alma on the twenty-eighth of February. And that was in the evening and we cast meeting. Oh, they went to closed session, so I left. I think that's it.
Didn't have any meetings.
Uh, myself either. Alrighty, uh, new business, the annual report from CASA. ERP, Michelle?
So. Good afternoon. My name is Michelle Zambek. Um, I work at Child Advocacy and I'm the CASA program director. I don't think I've met all of you, some of you are new. Um, but what I wanted to do is just kind of do a little bit of a refresher since we do have a couple of new commissioners. Just to make sure, um, they're up to date and aware about what we, wonderful work we've been doing, um. In the last, um, year since we've received, um, funding. So again, I work for Child Advocacy. We have, um, four, um, you know, I forgot about the flicker, sorry. There we go, okay. We have four major programs and underneath that umbrella, we have the Grashit County Substance Abuse Coalition, the Children's Advocacy Center. Um, the Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Program and then, um, court-appointed special advocates. Which is what I'm here to specifically talk to you about today. So we're going to talk about the advocacy efforts, um, in CASA. The impact that we make, the connections that we're making in the, the community and the future, um, of our program. So where CASA started, um, was actually in the seventies. We just had a judge that, um, decided he was making critical decisions upon, um, the lives of children who are in care. Um, and in care means that they may have been, um, in a foster placement, they may have been institutionalized. But more or less they were removed due to concern of abuse and neglect in the home. And so this judge decided that unfortunately our paid professionals were just overburdened. And they just did not have enough time to go into the homes, meet with the children and assess all of the needs, um, is. And get as much information as he was hoping for. So this idea came about of having a CASA program. Um, and so he took volunteers from the community, brought them through a very specialized training. And had them, um, appointed by the court and, and get going and, and start advocating on behalf of children. Well, our program assigned its first volunteer in two thousand eight. And we've been working very hard the last fourteen years to ensure that our most vulnerable children in the community have a voice in court. And, um, that their needs are being met. So specifically, um, what a CASA advocate does, um, is they, they learn, they engage, they recommend, they collaborate and report. So what that means is they go in and they learn all they can about what's going on with that child or sibling group. They try to figure out what the needs are, if there's anything that's not being addressed at this point in time. And that's any, any touch point that that child makes, whether it's going to school, whether, um, it's medical, um. Dental, anything that's missing. Now again, there are paid professionals that work with these children, but unfortunately we have a very overburdened system. And they simply don't have enough time to ensure that every single piece is, um, being touched upon. So we, our volunteers are assigned one case, um, and that can be one child, a sibling group. And they spend their time specifically with that child. They engage weekly, so they're going to see, they have eyes on, they're interacting. And we work with kids, um, from birth until they age out of the system. With that, they make, um, specialized recommendations. So possibly, um, a child might need orthodontics, possibly a child might be, need specialized, um, therapy. Um, potentially there might need to be a change in parenting time. Whatever that child needs, we make, um, a formal report and recommendations to the court. Not only do we do that, but we collaborate with all the partners that are involved. So the Department of Health and Human Services, law enforcement, any service provider that is working with that family. On trying to re- reunite the, um, them as a family. So we're sharing information with the attorneys, with the court, to make sure everyone's on the same page. Um, that is our goal, to make sure everyone has the same information when making these critical decisions. We do, um, we are one of the few entities that are involved in a court proceeding that makes a formal court report and disperses that to all parties that are involved. And with that, that court report, um, is, is unique because so much of what happens in law is black and white. Is this happening, isn't this happening? And so I say, kind of like, we add the color, we talk about the stories, the specific things that are going right, the things that still need work on. And we actually bring the child's voice to court. We ask the child, are there things that you want the court to hear? And we make sure those are addressed. You may recognize some of these faces. These are, um, our advocates that work very hard. They're, they work tireless hours, um, and this is a volunteer position. However, from what they do, you might think it was a paid, um, position, but they work tirelessly. But that power of one speaks very loud to what we do. Um, many times, um, I think we can all think of one person in our life that made a difference. And sometimes for these children, it's specifically that, um, advocate. Unfortunately, our children, when they are removed from their homes, um, many times there's multiple placements that occur. Their caseworker might change, their teacher might change. All of the things that they have become accustomed to in their life might change. But once a advocate is assigned, that advocate follows them, whether they remain in Grashit County or relocate to Shahuwasi County. So that one consistent, constant person is always there consistently interacting and advocating on their behalf. In two thousand twenty-two, we had nineteen volunteers that, um, completed three hundred and twelve visits. That was in person, going to school, going to medical appointments, um, observing parenting times. But specifically working on what was going on with that child and making sure that their needs are being met. From what was reported to our volunteers, and it's hard to make a volunteer do additional work by reporting hours. But from what we were able to gather, just in two thousand twenty-two, we've calculated over sixteen hundred hours that our volunteers spent on advocating. On behalf of our children, reviewing documents, talking to professionals, educators, caregivers, service providers, um, and creating reports. I'm happy to report that in two thousand twenty-two, we were able to support fourteen children in achieving permanency. So they were adopted, they went to a guardianship or reunified with families. Um, that may not seem like a big number, but it's a pretty big number. When you look at the average case, um, expectancy is approximately eighteen months, um, for a child that's in care. That's a pretty good number, um, for those children. Some of the things in addition to just, um, the general advocating and working with providers and teachers and, um, that we. Are using dollars for is to do activities and services and, um, add things that a child may not be normally exposed to. So we started a program several years ago called, called Planting Hope for Children, which allows children to get outside, learn about gardening. And if you're a gardener, you know how therapeutic that can be. And we are exposing children very young, allowing something to nurture and care for something and to see something. That started as dirt, turn into, you know, flowers or, you know, tomatoes, whatever it is. And then actually be able to reap the benefit of that. So, um, it also gave children an opportunity to, to get outside of what might have been their norm. Um, get outside of, we'll say, ears that they might be concerned about hearing them talk about things that are going on in their lives. So this just gave the children another opportunity. Another thing that we've been doing for several years is, um, called telling their stories art exhibit. This gives children an opportunity to provide, um, a therapeutic expression. Um, art is wonderful for, um, allowing people to just express themselves and with these children. Um, many of them have never painted on a canvas, let alone have it hang in an art gallery. So we do an, an opening night and we partner with the Alma Art Center, which y'all will be getting an invitation for. Our next show will be May first, the open house. So we're hoping you'll be able to join us to experience what some of our children and youth in the community are creating. We also have used our dollars to create activity kits for visits and, um. Just a different way to interact with the children rather than sitting at a table. Um, we have created outreach baskets and also informational baskets for our educators. That might be new to the system or may just not be aware of what a CASA is to make sure that they know. When a CASA comes and talks to you that there's something going on with this child, we're not able to give you the information, but you're better aware. Um, that there's something going on with the child. In two thousand twenty-two, we made over three thousand connections in the community, spreading awareness. Reaching out to folks who might be able to support us in the future as well as, um, potential new volunteers. I kind of look at it as when you have a car, someone needs to pack the trunk, someone needs to load the vehicle, someone needs to put the gas in the car and someone needs to drive it. Not everybody can be a CASA advocate, but we have a lot of people who can support and spread the awareness of the need and what's going on in our community. So that's what this number kind of represents. There are lots of reasons, um, why people decide to become an advocate. Are, all of our volunteers have a different reason, both. They all, what they all have in common is they want what's best for children. And with the support of our actual CASA staff, we are able to train them. We were able to offer and support, um, over five hundred hours of training that supports them in doing their advocacy efforts. Were able to offer resources that supply them with the things that they need when they're meeting with the children. But we also, um, recently took, um, the foster closet. So we're even able to expand the reach for the children that we're working with. So we're addressing needs of snow pants, boots, clothing. Many times children are removed from their homes with only the clothing on their back. So they get pillows, they get toiletry items, whatever it is that they need, we try to address along with our partner agencies. We are very involved in the community and I'm proud to say that, um, Grashit County has exciting things happening. Out of the entire state of Michigan, we had one of our, um, very own volunteers, um, become the CASA of the year. For the entire state of Michigan, Karen Kerr. I was also nominated for a two-year, um, representative out of the entire United States. Um, there's fewer than twenty of us that are representing the rural counties. So I see, uh, I have a seat at the National CASA, um, table, I guess, so to speak. Bringing not only rural community issues, but also specifically what's going on in Grashit County. So what are we doing? We're bringing decision makers into child advocacy, letting them know what's going on. We brought in folks such as Senator House, Congressman Mulhernar, Representative Fuller. We want the decision makers coming in and realizing what's going on, um, for all kids, but specifically also in Grashit County. So they're aware of the need and what it is that we need to support children and families in our community. Networking, we're consistently, um, reaching out to people like Attorney General Dana Nessel. And the Director of the Department of Michigan, Department of Health and Human Services, Elizabeth Hertel. She came through, these ladies and, um, folks that are decision makers come through and they're aware of what's going on. So we can continue our funding and work towards, um, solutions when funding issues come up. We also consistently are fundraising to maintain what we're doing and also with the hope to expand. Doing trivia night, perspango, um, raffle, just to name a few. Consistently, we're working on grants for local funding, state funding and federally to try and maintain what we're doing and then also into the future. So our goal, as always, is to make their voices heard. We haven't reached the goal of every child having a volunteer advocate, but that is our consistent goal. And with the support and dollars that the commissioners, um, and county granted us, we just continue to work towards that and appreciate the support. Questions?
How many, uh, people do you have now?
Um, well, in Michigan?
No, no.
Um, I believe as of last count, there was forty-four, as of the beginning of February, there was forty-four. But I will say that that's a little bit different when you look at in care because we've also made a, um, a shift. Where many children are also in a relative placement and that's not necessarily considered foster care. And so potentially that number is much la- larger and at any time can transition into needing to go into foster care.
These numbers are derived from children that are put into foster care?
Yes. Or have court jurisdiction, I should say.
Yeah.
Other questions?
This, this really, it's not like the Michigan thing, it's just our county.
This is specifically information for our county.
Sure.
Yes.
You do more than just our county or you like, you like other counties?
We are only working with Grashit County at this point in time. Unfortunately, some of the larger counties, um, which I know in comparison are, are huge, but like Isabella County currently doesn't have a program. Mayland County doesn't have a program. So really what we're doing in, in, in our area is we're kind of on the map and in our model as to what other counties we're hoping we'll be doing in the future. There's a movement, um, I, I failed to mention, but we are working, um, a year ago, we worked with our legislatures along with Michigan CASA. To get a line item, um, on the state budget. We were able to achieve that and now we're getting some pass-through funds. So the goal is to hopefully continue to expand, um, programs in, in the state of Michigan.
Well, is there a situation you may, you know, expand that on my account, something with that and take some of their funds to help fund your operation if. For child or per case or what?
It's by jurisdiction of the court. So, um, right now, and we would have to make agreements with other, other counties, but so we're, um, because it's court-appointed, we are actually, we go through Judge Barker, um, for our appointments.
Or even the other churches, the other companies just handle themselves. Like a question.
So to speak, yes. Um, like, you mentioned Matt Com, Matt Com does actually have a program there.
Okay.
Yeah.
So approximately, how many programs are there in Michigan?
There are twenty-eight and they're working on expanding that. So out of our eighty-plus.
Eighty-three counties, you have twenty-eight that have a CASA program.
We're working towards, like I said, now that we have that. Thank you.
Pretty evident to me.
Thank you, agreed. Um, unfortunately, you know, there's just not enough people to go around. Our paid professionals work very hard and this, just we come in beside them to support them, so.
I want to thank you too, you send me, um, notices every month for your meetings. And I usually can do it better in the summertime, but thanks for send them, still sending them to me every month.
Absolutely, absolutely. Any information we can provide and if, if you're educated, then you're helping us. Like I said, you're helping us drive the car, so.
Yeah, I also work at the schools.
I know you do.
I know.
I know you do. Thank you for what you do. Oh. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, community development. We have that pond out on Tyler Road. Wherever.
So, um. My name's Tony Miller. Um, I've got Bill Leonard and Deandra, that's her with me tonight. And we're gonna do our annual report for the Department of Community Development. Deandra did a real good job of putting this PowerPoint together. Uh, she does a lot for the department as far as keeping us organized, so I just want to thank her, but, uh. I'm gonna, we'll go through this real quick. If you've got any questions, uh, feel free to stop and ask. Um, yeah, we'll be going. This is part of much what our department's responsibilities are. Uh, we cover building, which is, uh, we review issued building permits, do the inspections. Um, we do everything in Grashit County except for the city of St. Louis. And the city of Alma handles their permit processing, but we do the plan review inspections and, uh. Do the field work, basically, they do the paperwork, we do the field work. Zoning, we do, uh, permitting for Elba, Hamilton, Lafayette, Newark, North Star and Sumner Townships. Uh, Soil Erosion Sediment Control is what SESC stands for. We, uh, Bill Leonard handles that for us along with the zoning. But, uh, we authorize and issue soil erosion and sed- sedimentation control permits when that necessary, when required.
That goes to the county, whole county?
That's the entire county with the exception of the city of St. Louis. So, light's fairly new program that, uh, we handle in our department as well. Uh, the townships involved right now are Elba, Fulton, North Star and Wheeler. Um, we're gonna go through all these through the presentation as well. And then also we oversee buildings and grounds, manage and maintain all the county-owned properties, so. It's kind of a breakdown of how, uh, the department's put together. Um, I'm the department head. Bill Leonard oversees zoning and SESC. Deandra's the deputy permits officer. And she also does SESC, light enforcement administration, uh, citizen planner. She just received her citizen planner. And, uh, been taking classes, she's looking at, what is it, the zoning? You know, so on the other side, we've got buildings and grounds. I've got a project supervisor that reports to me and then, uh, we've got two maintenance crew and two custodial crew.
Jessica's no longer.
What's that?
Jessica's no longer here.
No, well, this is last year's report, so. Yeah, so.
Okay.
Actually, we've got a new custodial, um, starting on, uh, Monday. So we're looking forward to that. Um, all of us, uh. All of us, uh, what's unique about us is we're all licensed to do, uh, SESC inspections and plan review. And Bill and I are both licensed as building, general contractors, plan review, building inspectors and building officials. So. Between us, we have a, a way of covering the county and, uh, make our steps count a little better. I, I actually did an SESC inspection this afternoon down at the lake. Bill picks up, uh, billing inspections for me when he's, when we're on opposite sides of the county, especially in the summer. So it works well. If one of us needs a week off, we've got coverage. Um, these are some of the classes that we've taken to continue our education. These are required to hold those licenses. Um, Bill and I are members of Northern Michigan Code Official Association. We go up to Gaylord nine months out of the year and, uh, receive credits up there, usually about six hours of credit. There's six different classes that we, six different fields that we have to have credits in. Uh, the last couple of months, we're far enough along to where we skipped because of the weather. It was pretty nasty out. We didn't want to risk it going to Gaylord, but pretty much we've never missed a meeting. So. Building. This is kind of a breakdown, a summary of activity related to building permits. Deandra broke it down to where it's a three-year comparison. So we can kind of see where we're at compared to previous years. Um, permit activity pretty much stayed the same. Uh, inspection activity was up a little bit last year, um, or down a little bit last year, but, uh, the revenue is still about the same. We had, you can see in twenty-one was down a little bit, but, uh, yeah, we're still staying really busy. Building address, that's another part of my job is, uh, we do addresses for the, for the county. You can see in twenty-twenty, that was quite a lot higher. That was because of there was, uh, close to eighty urban permits that I did and you're going to see a spike in that next year because I just did seventy or sixty-eight more here last month. So.
So you're telling us that for every winter, mine, there is an address?
Yep, yep. And we're actually looking, I'm working with, uh, Dan Morton and we're going to get like a, a layer on GIS. If those guys are out working on those permits, which they are every week, if somebody gets hurt, we want somebody to get up there. So, yeah, you tell, you know, call nine-one-one and say, hey, Turbin eighteen's got a guy down. They need an address, they need a physical.
Well, yeah, they need a physical address.
Yes. So, yeah, we've done them all. So, um, I'm going to hand this over to Bill. You want to take the lead on this one or you want me to run it? This is more of a, a breakdown of the permit activity and the revenue. Um, we've been a little up here. This year or last year compared to previous two. SESC, I am going to hand this off to you.
Yeah. One's a magic button.
The one on the right.
Let me just start by telling you, the Soil Erosion Sedimentation Control Program, uh, with the county really goes back to nineteen ninety-nine and a gentleman named Doug Dice, who did the work right down here. He initiated a lot of the program and it was built on from there. Back in the days when it was the DEQ, Department of Environmental Quality, they had mandated that all counties have a program, soil erosion and sedimentation control. That was in nineteen ninety-nine. It went into effect at about two thousand four. We really had to mandate, we were mandated to do it. And at that point, later on down the road, governor decided that the DEQ will now become Eagle. So it was combined and we are now under the aspect and control of Eagle. But basically, what do we do? We are in charge of controlling the waters of the state of Michigan. So it's not polluted. So that there are permits written and the reason for writing a permit is inspections. And if you have an inspection, it's paper trail. We know what happens that day. We can make suggestions about what should be done. Eagle wants four inspections. They would like to see an inspection even before the project begins, before ground is broken. An example will be down in, in Sam's area where if there's any building within five hundred foot of the waters of the state of Michigan, you are required a soil erosion permit. And Eagle wants to see pictures and documentation of that ground prior to any ground being broken. Then you want to see a, a picture and documentation of the progress. And about halfway through, and finally, they want to see documentation and pictures. Everything where it's all back to nicely, nicely, the grass is there. And, uh, we can close this thing out. The soil erosion permit is good for a year, unlike a building permit, which is six months, we can do. So that's the gist of it. We work under, well, it was Public Act four fifty-one and Part ninety-one of it. I'm not going to bore you with all that. It's a bunch of numbers. We actually react under Part ninety-one, the Public Act four fifty-one. That was back in, in nineteen ninety-nine. Oh, look at that. We went to Blight already. Um. Go back.
Yeah, no one go to Blight.
No, no. Um. Questions about soil erosion that I can try to help you with at this point?
No. I'm going to ask stupid, but I'm going to ask you, they put these fences up.
Thank you.
All right.
Black construction.
Black construction.
Yes, sir.
Does that really do any good? It does?
You bet.
I can't believe it.
Well, you know what? Here's what we need to do.
If it's installed properly.
Thank you. Installed properly. Now, here's the deal, buy the book, okay?
Yeah.
Black soap fence, construction fence.
Yeah.
Should be back away from the water. Or. Oh, it will be if I'm there and a damn sure will be if she's there. Back away from the water or the project, six foot, it's a six-six roll. When you get there, then dug down six inches.
Okay.
And back.
Backfill.
On the backside. Now, will we get out there and we can see some that you can throw a cat under?
Yeah, I've seen.
That gets fixed.
That's why I asked.
That gets fixed. That was a good fix. Lock up to the contractor and hopefully if they're there, say, hey pal, you need to do something about your fence. Well, yeah, we'll get to it. No, you need to do something about your fence. Well, we'll get it. Third time now, fix the fence. Because if it's not fixed, guess what? You ain't working. Yeah, plain and simple, plain and simple. Because if we don't and if we're not proactive and we are not that aggressive, then me and Eagle from Lansing is going to come around.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Again?
Yeah. And then we're going to hear about it big time. We don't want that. We want, that's where it's supposed to be. Yeah. But as we go through this and, and other people come up and speak, here's the thing. And I said, I'm not going to bore you with numbers and I'm not going to tell you about this. That doesn't matter. Here's what matters. Even if right now you have no questions, I would invite each and every one of you, especially, uh, Dave Owens and especially Mr. Gang. Come knock on our door, send us an email, go out with us. See the real world, see what we really do. Besides standing here, oh yeah, public act forfeit, who cares? Come on and take a look, see what we actually do, see what the county is all about. Then you'll know.
I'll do her.
Yeah, because I'm going to tell you this and I'll stand on my guns on this one. I've been here for the better part of ten years now, but I have never, ever been in a position as good as we are in right now as community development in the permits office. It's an honor and a pleasure to work with Deandra and while sometimes this guy too, but seriously, uh, county has never, ever been in a better position than they are right now as far as the permitting world, as far as the building department, soil erosion department or the Blight department. We're a hundred percent, but I'm telling you, come see us.
I do.
Right along. Get over there on shotgun. Probably better off going with me because her driving.
That's so good.
Actually, she's a better driver than I am. Any last questions for me?
Hi guys, my name is Deandra Messer. Um, I'm the Deputy Permits Officer for Community Development. Um, so the Blight program, it's fairly new. Um, we're working into our third year now. And for those of you who are new to the mission, um, it's been quite the journey. It's definitely a learning curve and process. Um, I will say that Bill and I are the ones who work on it the most. Um, and we're learning something new every day, every month. Um, and we're always trying to better our process in general. Um, not only on our end, but also for the people who are also trying to help them with bringing their property back into compliance. Um, our overall goal with the Blight program is not to just go out there and yell at people and say, hey, you need to get this junk off your yard. Um, our goal is to basically just make the aesthetic of their property more enjoyable for themselves and then also for their neighbors. So a little bit of what we did last year, um, so we actually added Ashley to, um, one of our jurisdictions. So we run with Elba, Fulton, Wheeler, North Star and Ashley. And the village of Ashley, um, is most recent. So we only got one complaint from them last year. Um, and then Elba also only sent us one complaint, but the other three townships did send us two and that is their quota. It's two complaints a year. Um, and so we had eight total complaints that were submitted last year. Uh, that was up by one compared to the previous year. Uh, we did have four open by the end of December. Um, so we were able to close out four of them and the other four were still in process. Basically, the average time that we spent per case, the time that it's actually open was five months and three weeks. Um, and so like from the time that it was first submitted, when we got that complaint and then to the time that I sent out that your property is in compliance letter, it was five months and three weeks. This was actually down since the previous year for our average time to complete a case was seven months and two weeks. Um, so don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but I see it as a win, um, just being able to, that people are aware that we are a program that's out there. They know that we're serious. Um, we're not just going to give them a paper and then forget about them. We're actually going to follow through with our word. Um, and making sure that they bring their property back into compliance with the Blight ordinance. Um, so the amount of inspections, this is done by Bill and myself. Um, typically we will do these separately, but there are times where depending on the property, um, depending on maybe the comments that we get when the complaint is submitted, we will both go out there. Um, and that's just the safety of both of us. Um, and so for Elba, we completed eleven inspections and that was just for that one case. Um, and this is where we go out on site. Um, we will typically try to meet with the property owner at the time. Um, we'll do a survey of their property with them, maybe give them a list of what exactly is in violation of the ordinance and then also offer them resources, um, for them to be able to either remove like junk cars or tires. Um, but one of the biggest issues that we've found for many of these cases is that a lot of complaints are about the fact that people have four to five, at one point it was fifty tires and they just don't know where to take them. Or there's not really a tire disposal place, um, in Grashit County. You kind of have to just go pay to get rid of them. But when you go out on some of these properties, sometimes money isn't a resource that they necessarily have just laying around. Um, so what we do is try to offer them more reset, more resources. Um, such like North Star did like a rock the block party where they helped clean up. And then they could take what is laying their property to this rock the block and dump their junk pretty much. And that was helpful for them. Um, but we are still always looking for more resources for, whether it's, um, junkyards who can come and get these vehicles, what it takes for them to come get these vehicles, um, what the cost might be, um, which we have found that for many junkyards, um, they will actually pay to come get your vehicle. And then the towing costs that technically the property owner would usually have to pay. It comes out of that, what they will pay them in general, um, which is pretty nice for them. Um, the most inspections we did was twenty-two and that was in North Star. Uh, we have a few difficult cases in North Star. Um, those are the ones where we usually spend the most time. So we found that, the frequency of inspections that we do is usually based on how difficult the case is. So if maybe it's someone who is more compliant, they understand that their property isn't um, technically in compliance and they do want to work, they just never had that nudge to actually start cleaning up their property until we came along. Sometimes those are usually the easier ones and we go out maybe every two or three weeks. And sometimes we go out and we get the cranky people who have absolutely nothing to do with us. They think that their property is fine. They're angry, um, typically when we first go out there. Um, just because why are we coming in to tell them what to do? Um, and typically when we run into these cases where it's a little bit more difficult, we're a little bit more resistant. Then we'll go visit the property like once a week or maybe even two times a week, depending on what their schedule like is like as well. And this kind of just lets them know that we are here, we are present and we're not going to forget about you. Uh, so we're just looking at a little bit of date data, um, for the last two years. So again, in twenty twenty-one, we had seven complaints. This past year we had eight. Um, so we did get one more. Um, the number of open complaints at the end of each year, in twenty twenty-one, we only had three that were open. And then last year we had four that were open, um, at the end of December. We were able to close four cases, um, in the past two years. And then in twenty twenty-one, we had only one case that went to prosecution. So for those of you that don't know, if it comes to a case where we do everything that we can legally, we've sent them all the notices, we tried to contact them, tried to offer them resources and it's just not working. Their property is still not in compliance and they don't want to work with us. At this point, um, we actually work with Laura Beaver up in the attorney's office. Um, and she basically processes it and takes it to court for us. Um, so we don't like to see that happen. Um, that's obviously the very last resort, but it is a resource for us in case these um, cases become too difficult and technically we just can't do anything more. Um, so I will say that we did have one case from twenty twenty-two, is submitted in twenty twenty-two and we did just send it to Laura in February. Um, just because the gentleman is now not compliant. He doesn't want to work with us anymore and his property is technically still in violation. Um, so Laura is going to help us process that. Um, so the number of inspections that we did the past two years, they actually, even now, we did sixty-six each year. Um, not sure how that number worked out so nicely, but it did. Um, and then the actual number of hours worked. Um, so this is between Bill and myself. In twenty twenty-one, we put a hundred and three hours into working on these cases. And then in twenty twenty-two, we put in a hundred and five hours. Um, so obviously this isn't exactly a full-time job, but we do both take it seriously and we try to put as much time and effort into this possible. Um, we do both agree that it's a great program. Um, it's just a matter of the learning curve and then also getting the word out there that this program exists and it is a resource to these townships. So this is just a quick example of what an easier case might be. So this is Blight case twenty-two oh seven. So the initial complaint, junk and trash in the house, on the porch, all around the house and in the earth. So basically just picture a rundown house, broken steps, um, and junk everywhere. So basically, just picture a rundown house, broken steps, um, and junk everywhere, and the lot is no bigger than an acre. Um, so the complaint was first submitted on September 21st. We were actually able to contact the property owner by October 12th. And the story with this one was he basically bought the house as is. Um, so none of it was his junk, he just hadn't had the chance to actually physically get up and clean the property up yet. Um, but he, once he did get our notice, um, he did work very hard, very diligently. Um, and he was able to bring his property back into compliance. So our final inspection was December 7th. And then by December 28th, I was able to send out that letter that said your property is in compliance. Um, but that case is very simple because it was just, I believe we only had six inspections with him. Um, he is very compliant with us, he's very friendly. It was just a matter of he just didn't realize that he was in violation. Oh, so I don't know if you can see this, um, but the picture on the left is just a picture of a rundown van, his roof that's falling, just a bunch of junk in the yard. And then the picture on the right, um, is his side yard that's completely cleaned up. Um, the other side of the house is also completely cleaned up, the backyard was cleaned up. And then that camper is operable. Um, he was actually staying inside there while he was cleaning up the inside of the house. And then there is lawn tools in the back underneath the tarp that he said he would get a shed and put them in. Um, that was just, it was at the beginning of winter when he closed this case. Um, and that's technically not in violation, so he was good to go with that. Uh, so we're very happy with the success and ease of this case. Um, so if we look at a more difficult case, so technically, the difficulty level of a case is determined based on the ability to reach a property owner, just if we can make contact with them. Um, the time it takes to actually receive a response, because maybe we can contact them, maybe we send them a letter, they know that we're around and aware of their property, but maybe they just don't want to contact us. Um, and then also the amount of blight that actually needs to be removed, and the resources that are available. Um, so with this case, uh, the initial complaint was that it was overgrown, there is vegetation, there's an inoperable vehicle, there's some junk in the yard, and the house is also unlit. Um, so we first got this case in September 23rd. And the main issue with this case and why it's so difficult is the fact that we are and have been unable to locate the property owner. So we have sent notices, um, we have looked into the property taxes, we've talked with neighbors, we've talked with, um, the post office, we've talked with the township. Everyone knows this, um, property owner's name. They saw her four years ago, and then now we just don't know anything. So at this point, what do you do when you can't locate the property owner? To talk to them and say, hey, your property is not in compliance? Well, someone hurt something because someone did mow, and they did mow, um, take down all the vegetation, get rid of all the junk. So someone, whether it's a neighbor, um, doing a good deed, they did come out and they did take care of all that. So our one issue that we haven't closed this case with yet is that inoperable vehicle. And technically, we still have to process a case if it doesn't come into compliance with the blight ordinance. Um, so this means that she will be brought ready now, not for prosecution, but she is going to see what our legal steps are with how we can remove this vehicle, because the township does still want us to process it. Um, and they are paying us for this service, so we're gonna do everything that we can within our boundaries to help them, um, bring this property into compliance, make it look nice. Um, so the picture on the left again was the first inspection that we did. Um, the weeds are pretty high, we didn't travel too far onto the property. And then the picture on the right, uh, they had a washer removed, an AC removed, everything was mowed down. Um, someone actually fixed the steps on the building, and then the only thing that remains is that car. Yeah, does anyone have any questions?
I think North Shore Township is gonna come. So here you have another county here in township.
Yeah, we always want.
And it's working well. I think what's happening is that people are hearing about, when it happens, you know, I've talked to townships that I represent about, um, you know, they're trying to send people out, they're trying to hire an attorney to send letters, and it really never goes. And I just think this is a great project, uh, you know, Clinton County has done this for a long time. And, uh, it's just worked out well for us, I think.
And, and the townships really have all worked out well.
Let me back up on one thing. Yeah. I wanna expand a little bit on what you said. She does a great, she do odd stuff too, because, you know, we look like goofers.
Perfectional.
Yeah, I do know. Anyway, the reason, uh, Mr. Smith said it works so well is this. Tracy Corrus wrote an intergovernmental agreement. Now, what does that do? Well, it's long and lengthy, but what it does is it moves the blight out of the civil infraction and moves it into a criminal infraction. That means you can go to court. Prior to this, yeah, we, we did some blight. And, but we didn't have the intergovernmental agreement, we didn't have any teeth into it. So what would happen? Bring the gentleman or lady into court. Oh, yeah, you got blight, that's $400. Okay, here's your money, thank you very much. Go out and get some more stuff. Put in the yard. Now, now it gets serious when you're in front of the judge.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I remember a case in Clinton County in Ovid, just outside of Ovid, where they ended up sending the police over, and, uh, they sent in people to haul this stuff away and put it on his taxes.
Yeah, yeah.
Ended up tipping the county's car, the tractor, went to jail.
Yeah, this was a, was a real classy example, but it's got to be, and it's, it's a good thing that happened. I think it adds a lot for the townships.
Yeah.
Because they don't have the funds to, I have a lawyer, and I'll just write the letter after the letter, and nothing happened.
Yeah, exactly.
So it worked out well, it's just a good deal. I mean, it's really.
Expert graduate county paid for our prosecutor to be up there and just put him to work when he can.
That's right.
Just wanted to add that point, thank you.
Thank you. You have any questions, or anything else, Tony? What's that? You got any questions more?
He's not done yet.
I'm gonna blitz through the buildings and grounds cap improvement real quick, just to let you know how we're sitting on that. Um, completed cap improvement price. Now, what we've tried to establish is a typical carpet and paint replacement program to where we've made a list of the worst areas that need it. And we've said we're gonna pick on these two departments this year, next year, we've got this guy, the year after that, and so forth and so on. Um, just kind of a quick thing about all we got done. Um, we got the, uh, rooftop over the jail replaced, the tractor and the lawnmower, thank you very much, the guys are really coming great, we're doing good. Um, health department, we got all the flooring done in there.
Is that coming close to being done, or?
It's real close. Um, here's a couple of the completed projects that just came up last year that we had to deal with. Um, we had to replace the water softener over to jail, remember, we brought that to the board?
Yeah.
Voted on that. We had some, a situation in the basement where we needed to clean up an area for, uh, storage. We got that all done last year as well, so. So going back to the cap improvement projects, the chiller unit should be here March 23rd. Now, we had that approved. It's been a while, mechanical equipment has been horrible. That's on the way. Um, this HVAC, we call it rooftop unit three, has been replaced. That just got completed about a month ago. The health department, after all this time, they are hanging drywall today. So all they, they've got a, all the HPC system is in place and, uh, operational. They're just filling in the spots where the P-TAC units is, uh, the individual heaters that went outside underneath the windows, they've eliminated those. Uh, they're just filling those areas in, and then we're done with that. And believe it or not, talking with the contractor last week, he said that, uh, we should come in under what the estimate was. Believe that or not?
That's always a good thing.
We've got some sidewalk, uh, repair that we'll get into here. We'll be talking about that in the future. Um, continued education. So Deandra is now a certified citizen planner, and she's gonna earn her zoning administrator certificate. Takes the class on, takes the test on Friday, right? So.
Good luck.
But, uh, I think that pretty much wraps it up. If there's anything else you need. Um, I did get the outside of the building all fixed up last year, that turned out great.
Very nice.
So I didn't mean to interrupt.
Or, no, our, our wind turbine project for the south part of the county. Uh, are they gonna start?
When the frost laws come off. They've all been permitted. Uh, most of the components are on site.
They're in the ground, yeah.
Yeah, you drive around, they're, they're laying.
Get the whole dug and done.
Yeah.
I think the biggest one was concrete, I think is what they were telling me.
They needed, the frost laws need to come off, then they're gonna fire up the concrete trucks, and they're gonna start.
They said, I don't have hundreds of loads, it's this lot.
Yeah, it's about 485 yards per footing, per, per footing.
It's like 200 vehicles.
Yeah. Yeah, it's 45 and 50 trucks per.
Yeah, well, and, and what Fred was saying is that they wanted to do it last year, but they couldn't find anybody to supply that much cement.
There was a shortage of material.
Yeah.
Um, they think they've got the kinks worked out of that, but.
How many turbines?
Seventy-two.
Two, two, two new ones.
And after that, there's none, there's more.
That's what's on the document right now, no more scheduled for now, so. Fred was said that was it. Yeah. So, all right, well, thank you for your time.
Thanks for your work.
Yep.
Do a good job, guys.
Appreciate it. All right, and so then we were down to man number four, man.
Number three, consideration.
Oh, I thought we just take your man.
Sure.
Yeah, we're moving ahead.
Okay.
Okay, yep, I can. I am ready. So I had two quick things to talk about. One was that Frontier reached out to me yesterday, and they are interested in applying for, uh, one to three Robin Grants here in Gresham County. So what they asked us to do was to pro, to provide a letter of support, um, for their projects. And this helps their, very, them get a better score when they submit their application. So what I am requesting from the board is to submit a, a letter along with their project. And they provided me with a form letter basically that I've, I distributed to the board this afternoon. Um, and so my recommendation would be to go with that, but if, if you want me to edit the language in there to make it more customized to Gresham County, I can do that as, as well.
I think if this is her canned letter, it's probably fine, man. I mean, they, they're submitting probably a bunch of them the same way, and.
Yeah. Okay. Well, then I would ask the, the board to authorize you to sign that so that I can get that to them, and they can go ahead and submit that with their application, let's do next week.
I make a motion, then we allow, uh, the board chair to sign a, uh, a letter of recommendation for the Robin Grant that, that will go to, uh, and who's it going to?
Frontier.
Frontier, Frontier, it's probably mine.
Moved and supported to sign the Robin Grant letter for Frontier. All in favor?
Right, I agree.
All in sign, wishing you good.
Excellent, thank you so much. And then the other thing I just wanted to briefly mention was that the Michigan, the state of Michigan, my high office, the high-speed internet office, they're going to be, um, they're doing a road show, road tour all throughout the state of Michigan, and they will be in Ithaca on March, Tuesday, March 28th, from 2:00 to 4:00 at the Gresham Isabella R E S D. And they're just inviting any members of the public, community, uh, leadership to attend and make their voices heard about kind of the state of broadband in Gresham County and, and also, um, provide opinion about prioritizing funding that they receive in the future from the federal government, so.
What was that date again, man?
It's, uh, Tuesday, March 28th.
Okay.
What time?
From two, yeah, from 2:00 to 4:00 PM. And it's at the RSE, sorry, the R E S D building here in Ithaca. We do have a short little article about that on the Gresham, the homepage of the Gresham County website too, that has all of the information as well. And they are requesting that people do register if they intend to come. I think that's just so that they can have some type of head count and know how many people to expect, and that, that link is also posted on our website.
It's a good thing to tell you all over your townships when you go visit them. Because it's important, more important, actually more important for the townships than it is for any village and city, because they always have those services. The people that are in the townships are the ones that need the services. So make sure you tell people at your township board.
Man, do you have a phone number?
There is not a phone number associated with it, but if they, if they go to our website, they, there is a link to where to register for the event, and it does, our little article includes all of the information. It's sort of the time, location, that type of thing.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Is that it, man?
Yep, that's it.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, but we met mostly about a new administrator. We kind of kicked it around a little bit after 2:00 o'clock and, uh, stayed in session and, 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 and. Guess what, I put spots on it.
I move to make a conditional offer of employment as Gresham County Administrator, Chris Osterhoff, contingent on a successful background check and contract negotiations.
I support that. Moved and supported to, uh, offer Chris Osterhoff the position, uh, county administrator. Uh, I think we'll probably want to walk all vote on that. And the conditions of a, a good background check and, uh, contract negotiations.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes.
Commissioner Owens.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes. All right, I, um, I spoke to Frank before he left, and I've just been texting him here a little bit. I went down to talk with Chris just before this meeting, before we come back in a session, and I, I said really, if he did get the job, what would it take to secure the position? And so apparently, we've offered him the job, so now I'll tell you what it'll take to secure.
What came first?
Yeah. So, so this is, uh, we, we chatted about this for a little bit. Um, Chris is at, uh, he is at step two, he's at step five, he's at 89773 right now. Uh, we chatted about, um, coming to step three in the administrative position, which would be about 93.5 to start. We talked about a two-year contract. He would be on contract in this position, we have to have a contract with him, it's not a, it's just not an employee type of thing. And then in year two, he would go through like a step four, a 96.5. It's about a 3% raise in year two. Um, what we would do is, uh, we would contact Stoker and have him look at Tracy's contract and kind of tie it somewhat to that. Couple of things that'll be different than in Tracy's contact that we had talked about and pointed out. In her contract, she had a $5,000 bump that went into her, uh, 401K that won't be included in this for Chris. Um, she had 120 hours of leave, there was a few years she didn't take more money, and she just took time off, which was, ended up being 120 hours, that will be included in this. That's, uh, what will be included for this, uh, is, uh, three months severance pay. It's about, so no just cost. So if you just come here one day and said, well, oh, yeah, and you gotta go, you know, we're gonna pay him three months out.
You don't even have to say that, you're just done. You're in that well.
He tentatively talked about that, uh, he agreed to that. If you want to prove this based on getting a contract done, and Frank is still gonna do a background check, he's got a ticket yesterday or something. So, uh, I know we had talked about that, when we have to do that, he thought it'd be a good idea. And so if this background check comes back okay, we get the contract done with Stoker, we'll do it, our attorneys will do the contract. And then we will.
How soon can he start work? When those are done? Oh, you can't, you can't officially do it until that's all meant to be.
To get that done, I, I'm thinking we could probably have this done in a couple of weeks. Uh, Frank said he was going to, if we approve this, I'm gonna follow him tonight after his meeting. He would start the background, I guess some third party does a background thing or something, I don't know. And then we would contact Stoker, uh, so I talked about it, we would have him look at Tracy's contract, make some changes, try to get it to everybody to take a look at, and then we would just wrap it up here. Next meeting.
Have you accepted the job? Have you accepted the job?
For this term, yes.
I didn't hear him say. Still thinking on it.
So I kind of think that's where we're at, and if.
I think the other stuff, none, is mute now.
Yeah, I think so too. I, I think that but basically, we probably want to make a motion to this, you know, and if everything passes, we'll sign a contract.
So move. Support.
Let's do a real. So just real quick, everybody, again, it'd be ninety-three, five.
Two-year contract.
There you go.
Ninety-three, five.
First year. Ninety-six, five, the second year.
Ninety-six, five, second year.
A three-month severance package, parachute. For release without clause. It's all right?
Bunting.
Yes.
Gay.
Yeah.
Commissioner Owens.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yeah.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes. Any unfinished business?
Yeah, we have to run to close session.
Yeah, let's get some business done here. Any other public comments? We're really going to close session here in a little bit. Any public comments? We'll do those now. Any public comments, Matt?
Nope, nobody's joined in for public comment right now.
All right, so we're gonna go into public, our close session here.
To do what?
So for some heading litigation.
Okay. You have to say that.
And then we need to take.
We need a roll call and motion. Thank you. Your motion?
Yep.
Move and support to go to close session for possible litigation. Yes.
Commissioner Owens.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes. Can you shut us off, Matt?
Yep, just bear with me one for one. Taking care of any business after you come back out.
Hey.
We didn't do public comments.
We did public comment, yeah.
At the last.
Just the German, okay.